Good evening, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order at six thirty. And the secretary will call the role of each board member.
Kenny Kofelt.
Here.
Scott Gardner.
Here.
Matthew Heron.
Here.
Sam Kimpton.
Here.
Michael Stees.
Here.
Diana Nichols.
Here.
And Barbara Schrader is here.
You will stand to say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And recognitions and presentations, anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. As you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And when you approach the podium, please give your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satinon, and he will provide those to us after the meeting. Remarks may be limited to three minutes and to one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. And as a reminder for those seated on the stage, please speak directly into the microphones so your comments can be heard by those in attendance here as well as those live streaming. First up is Sedalia School District Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next up is NEA. There's Mr. Jenke. Thank you.
Thank you.
SCEA? Is there anybody? There she is. Hi.
... Representatives attend NSTA Convention Assembly of Delegates on November eighteenth and nineteenth. Staff scholarships were due the week before Thanksgiving. Um, we've only received six, which is really unusual. I know that, um, Bob sent out that blast. So, uh, people have a really good opportunity this year, hopefully. Um, and we're gonna select winners during the December SCEA meeting and recognize those winners during the January School Board meeting. Uh, we are accepting, um, applica- or nominations, rather, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Outstanding Educator. We currently have two hundred sixty-three nominations, and those nominations will close January first. Um, SCEA appreciates Mr. Satinon and the administration team for sharing links to staff, parents, students, and community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Finally, you have Stephanie Jackson, National Distinguished Principal Honoree.
Yes, and I, you know, this was brought up, uh, last year, of course, but I wanted to ask Ms. Jackson to come speak to the board and the public a little bit about, uh, the honor that she was bestowed being among the forty-one elementary middle-level principals named the two thousand twenty-two NAESP National Distinguished Principals uh, by the National Association of Elementary School Principals. Uh, and they were honored in Washington DC, and she flew back there to, uh, partake of that, that conference, and wanted her to, to share a little bit.
Alright, good evening. Being named the, um, National Distinguished Principal for Missouri was an absolute honor and a complete shock, um, just to be honest. And, um, being able to go out to Washington DC and represent our state, um, was a chance of a lifetime. The event was, um, far blew anything, um, above anything that I ever thought was possible. I still can remember the day that I won, whenever, um, I finished and they gave me a speech. The lady came up to me and she said, "Your heart for kids shines through." And I thought that was the greatest compliment ever. Um, and it wasn't always about doing the fancy programs or having this or that 'cause it's really just, you know, what everybody in this room, all my colleagues do. We show up each and every day to do what's best for kids. And, um, so it was nice to be recognized, um, for doing just those things that we all believe in. Um, going back to the DC, we were there for over three days and, um, while I was there, was able to network with over forty-one other distinguished principals across the country, many of who I'm still keeping in contact with today. We, um, often send text messages, are now friends on Facebook. Um, so the networking and the opportunities that it led to, um, have been, um, really neat to see. Some of the highlights from my trip, um, I was able to give a speech in front of everybody and share kind of my educational story. Um, I was able to spotlight all the great things we're doing within our district and within our state, um, really highlight, you know, just the importance of why, what I believe as a firm, as a principal, is just building those strong relationships with my students and families and staff, and that, that will always be top priority. Um, also, um, they treated us very, very well. It wasn't like your typical, um, educational conference that you go to. Um, the first night that we were there, we attended, um, a welcome reception, um, and it was at the Department of State in the Thomas Jefferson Reception Room. And we had to have, like, security clearance just to be able to attend. Uh, the building had an amazing, um, balcony that overlooked the Lincoln Memorial and the Capitol. So, the pictures opportunities, um, were phenomenal. And then Friday, we attended the White House for a group photo. We didn't get to actually go into the White House ever since COVID, that's kind of, um, been stopped. We did get to attend the US Department of Education, and we did have a surprise, um, visit from the Secretary of Education, which isn't always, um, doesn't always happen. And he came and spoke, then we broke out into breakout sessions and discussed current concerns in public education. Um, it definitely was very clear and transparent that we are all fighting the same fight. Doesn't matter if we're in central Missouri or where we are, um, throughout our country, but we're all, you know, having very similar challenges, whether it be teacher recruitment and shortage, the mental health, the effects of COVID, um, all of those things that we're all, um, dealing with. On that evening, we were able to conclude the trip with a very nice black tie awards dinner and dance. And we actually had another surprise, the Secretary of Education actually attended that as well. Um, he came, and so I was able to get a picture with him, Miguel Cardonia. He also is a former, um, elementary principal and was also named a National Distinguished Principal. So, it really, he's, you know, takes great heart into this program and what it, um, does for your leadership skills. So, that was, and his speech that he gave, like, when you got done, you were, like, just fired up and ready to go. Um, and I wish that I could share his speech with everyone because it was just so powerful. And, um, at the awards, we were each given a very nice bell and an award, um, that will be in my office. And I can just say that this trip, uh, this trip truly was a chance of a lifetime experience and one I will forever treasure. And I'm just thankful for you all for supporting that and thankful for my colleagues and, um, everyone across the state who has made this a possibility.
Congratulations.
Any questions?
Alright. Thank you. And next, the board would like to recognize Mr. Bob Satinon, uh, the twenty twenty-two Missouri School Public Relations Association Communications Award. Dr. Fraley?
Uh, yes, and we're, uh, very deserving of that, uh, honor, uh, Mr. Satinon. And we were intending to also recognize, uh, Ollie Pettis from the Lunch with Ollie segment. Uh, unfortunately, Ollie's under the weather, so we are going to punt this to December and have Ollie join us for recognition at that time. But we're very proud of Mr. Satinon. We, uh, I cannot attend a meeting around the state where someone doesn't come up to me when they find out that I'm from Sedalia and tell me what a wonderful man Bob Satinon is. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Bob. And next is the School Safety Specialist Recognition. Um, the Sedalia Board of Education is very proud to recognize two board members, um, Mr. Kenny Kofelt and Mr. Michael Stees for earning the School Safety Specialist Certification from the Missouri School Boards Association. These two members of the board have shown their dedication and compassion to the students and staff of the Sedalia Two Hundred School District. Their efforts and actions deserve both appreciation and gratitude. Thank you both so much for attending that conference and representing Sedalia Two Hundred. Thank you. And now, we are going to exit the stage where we're going to see presentations, um, on the Smith Cotton Junior High and New Core presentation, and then follow right after that the demographics and enrollment projection study.
Good evening, I would like to just take a few minutes, this won't take very long, but I would like to thank our community. Um, they're doing some great things for the junior high and the high school, and so I just wanted to go through and explain a few of these. New Core came to us, um, probably this summer. I'm gonna turn around. And wanted to do something to help our kids. And so, we did a lot of brainstorming with New Core and the high school, and we came up with a student sponsorship program. And so, this year, starting this summer, we have put this in place. What we did is we picked eighteen students, there are three grades, they're doing seventh, eighth, and ninth. There's six students from each one. And what's really cool is each year, we will pick another six. So, this program is gonna grow and grow and grow. And what they are doing is they are sponsoring these students. They sponsor them academically, financially, and socially. So, they're given a certain amount of money, and they work with their counselors to spend that to be able to gain opportunities that they wouldn't, like tutoring, if they needed that outside of the school day, you know, additional tutoring for maybe algebra or geometry. If they wanted to play the flute and they couldn't afford to have lessons or to get the flute, then they will help them. They use the money in school fees, things that they might not be able to join because their family can't academically do that. But they work with their counselors to spend that money. And what's really been fun this, this year, is they have trouble spending that money. They don't realize, so we kinda have to, we kinda have to push a little bit in the beginning to get them to use some of those funds. Um, so this program, they also have done, if you'll go to the next slide, many experiences. And what I've told them is, these kids are gaining a partnership and what they're calling a family now with these adults from New Core. They are our family. We've done lots of activities with them. The kids are starting to get very comfortable. We did a banquet at the end of the year last year to start the program, and the kids came in and, like, didn't say a word. They'd never been to something so fancy, and they were just all nervous. But now, when we went to our last event out on the New Core property, they went fishing and played games with all these adults. And those relationships that they're making with these mentors is amazing. So, lots of opportunities here, they took them shopping at Kohl's to get them, it was only supposed to be one new outfit. That was coming out of their funds. Oh no, New Core dug into their pockets, and they ended up having, like, three or four hundred dollars to spend. If they came to the register, and their lady was standing right there writing everything down, it, if it came to, they had twenty more dollars to send, they were sent back to get something else. So, these kids started their year with pride, with having a new outfit that they were very happy to have, and new tennis shoes and some things that they needed. So, we've seen these kids come out of their shells and really grow. So, it's been a great program, and we look forward to continuing this, um, program with New Core. And we personally have made a lot of friends with the people that work there, so. Any questions about the New Core program? The second one is the McAllisters. I would like to thank them, without them, we wouldn't be able to do our Student of the Month. Um, each kid receives due to them a T-shirt, Student of the Month T-shirt, and then they get a gift card. So, we are able to do this program, thanks to the McAllisters. The last one is the Smith Cotton Junior High PTA. They also sponsor for incentives for our citizenship, uh, program that we have at the junior high. Pretty much it, just wanted to say thank you.
Alright, uh, this evening, we have Preston Smith. Uh, as people will recall, about a year ago, part of the long-range process, uh, planning for the district's facilities. Uh, Holson Miller Architects were, of course, uh, hired on as a consultant, as was the demographer Preston Smith. So, I wanna welcome here today to, uh, he's gonna report on, uh, his findings from his study.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fraley. Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Okay, I guess I'll go ahead and try this, if it works. Okay, try again. I'm not getting it, I'm getting little red lights, but I'm not getting anywhere, it doesn't move. Oh, okay, left and right, alright, got you. Alright, a little bit of, uh, the credentials I've got, uh, in our firm. I've completed, uh, more than two hundred enrollment stays around the country in fifteen states since two thousand and four, so we've been at this coming up nineteen years. I have a graduate degree in public administration and statistics. Uh, our GIS analyst has a graduate degree in GIS and geography, and our main enrollment projection, he teaches, uh, spatial analysis at the Oklahoma State University, a PhD. Way we do our projections, we gather twenty-five years of data. Sometimes we go back even a hundred years to get population data, so we can get trends as much as we can. We try to look at economic data, grade data, run multiple statistical models, then our models is an example of how far we go. We may go up to fifteen different models for each study. And the idea is to get a model that fits, one that has the highest level of repeatability and projectability. And with that, our, our, now, uh, most of our studies, we usually vary by no more than one percent per year. Uh, for your district, we'll probably be about half that. We should, miss no more than, uh, half percent. For your district, since nineteen eighty-six, your district enrollment's not varied by more than a thousand from the very top to the very bottom. It's very, very stable, but, uh, by all that same token, it's not grown very fast either. Our projections see very small enrollment declines. In two models out of three, it looks like your enrollment's gonna go down. And one model says you might have an occasional increase. Basically, the demographic data shows that the childbearing women, it's fairly flat. Uh, that's what the top line is of the number, and then the percentage of the population for each of these graphs. The under-five-year-old children, pretty flat for the next ten years. School-aged children, it goes down a little bit, that's not good. If we follow the same pattern for the next ten years as we did the, this previous ten, uh, that's where you'd end up, about forty-seven hundred students. As I said, two out of three models are pointing downward. And here's what the totals look like for each of the ten years. It's very stable, that's, the thing is, uh, the private school enrollment has increased to sixteen percent in the last two years, it's a huge increase for this area. Uh, these six schools, uh, we actually called each of these schools to get their enrollment counts. Uh, it went from six hundred and eleven in twenty nineteen to seven hundred and nine. So, while the school district's been fairly stable or back and forth low, uh, you had to see the private school enrollment going up. Only five point one percent of the Sedalia students live in houses built within the last ten years. So, very little impact of new construction. And I wanna strike this a, a couple of different ways. A lot of times, people believe that when you see a new house go up, you're thinking, gee, enrollment's gonna go up. But there's virtually no statistical relationship in that with your enrollment and new construction. Because you can see that, uh, the dist- you've got, uh, very, very few students that live in the houses, and you also, you have a, a large number of new construction, but also, you don't, you have plenty of years where your enrollment goes down, when you still have large construction. So, the point is, there is no relationship statistically between new residential construction and new enrollment, which doesn't work. And also, in most, uh, districts, there is a strong relationship between new jobs and new enrollment. But that doesn't work that way in Sedalia either, for whatever reason. I think because you've got a large, uh, uh, number of people that are not in the workforce, or you've got a large number of retirees that move out here into the new homes. But let me mention one thing about this, uh, and it's a point that I really wanna make because we, we do studies all over the country. And, uh, I've, in Jackson County, I've, was on the Board of Equalization for fourteen years. I've heard about ten thousand appeals on property taxes. And I ran this last year for county executive in Jackson County. So, I understand taxes, I understand local government. But of all the counties I've worked with for the last twenty years, your assessor in this county is doing more to harm your school district and all of the other tax entities than any other assessment that I've seen anywhere in the country. Because there are probably millions and millions of dollars that is not being properly assessed in this county. I mean, the data is astounding, and I will stress this, that, uh, one, he, he's not doing his job, he isn't elected official. But if, uh, if I were in this county, I'd be trying to either get a petition to get him out of office. I definitely, when he comes up, I'd try to get him out. But it's gross dereliction of duty, negligence. And giving you an example of what I'm talking about is that, when I looked at the, your parcel data and analyzed it, there were so many cases of the commercial properties that were bought for, say, seven hundred thousand dollars in twenty-two thousand and eight, and they'd be on the books today for a half million. They weren't even on the same values of fourteen or fifteen years ago of what people paid for them then, they were lower. And the only way that happens is, one, you've got a complete collapse in the real estate market, which that hadn't happened now, or you got, like, a fire into a place that caused a mass destruction and they had to put on the tax rules a lot cheaper. So, under our state law, when someone buys property, that's assumed to be what you're willing to pay for it, and most assessors put that on the tax rules for the value of what you paid for it. You buy a house for a half million dollars, that's what you thought the value was worth, so why shouldn't I, as an assessor, put on the value in the books for a half million bucks? In those cases, he competes with it for less value, which is unbelievable. But we are talking across this district and across this city, millions and millions of dollars have not been assessed properly. And I'm all for one, uh, lower taxes. I don't like taxes, paying taxes as much as anybody. But for what this district or the city could do with that additional money would be unbelievable. We're talking, like, new public pools, new public gyms. You could do something to actually attract families to this city that'll help your school district. I mean, you could use that money, you could even roll back some levies because the assessment would be so much higher. But I'm telling you that, and I also told Dr. Fraley, I said, "When he gets up for reelection, I wanna come out here and campaign against him." Because, uh, there's no assessor in this state that does his poor job, is what he's got. And, uh, you should run him out, you really should. Next year's the assessment year, that should be the year he gets out there and starts physically looking at these commercial properties, trying to fix things. But without a doubt, he has not done his job, they are not on the tax rules correctly, and there is case after case after case where it's inaccurate. So, if the state tax commission will not intervene to fix this, and the only way you fix it is at the ballot box, then I'll say you're gonna have to make a campaign against him, a petition, charge him with gross negligence or something. So, that, that's my soapbox on that. But if there's anything that I gotta tell you about that I came across, I, I, I did all the personal analysis on that for no charge, 'cause I wanted to see what was going on here. And by the way, it took months and months and months to get the data. And now I understand why, okay? Alright, the diversity, it has increased substantially in the last thirty years, even though your enrollment's not changing much, and your biggest ch- increase has been in the Hispanic enrollment. And we'll look at building capacity, and this is the last point I'll make, is that we have a standard we've been using for over a thousand buildings around the country to look at how much square footage is assigned per student. For elementary, it's about a hundred and ten, middle school a hundred and thirty-five, and high school a hundred and sixty. And we'll look at the gross square footage under the roof. And we'll look at the gross square footage under the roof, just to see how many students could fit in that building. And when we do that, we show that you've got excess capacity, room to put another 1,743 students. But it tells you where the capacity's at. You've got a lot of space there in the middle school. A little bit tight in the skyline in elementary, not by much. When we break it down just by elementary schools, you've still got a little more excess capacity, about 191 students to spare, which is still good. A little bit imbalanced on the percentages there. You could redraw attendance lines a little bit to rebalance that, but it looks like it's working for you. If we stretch it out to 2032, your excess capacity goes to about 1,600 students. And even, these are the highest optimistic projections we've got, is the high end of what it could possibly be. You still have space for over 100 students in elementary schools. The bottom line is, you've got space to spare. There's no reason to worry about building new buildings. There's no reason to worry about making any changes, really. Well, appreciate you indulging me about talking about your assessor, but if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Yeah?
Couple of things are just a little peculiar about us. You mentioned children born at Bothwell. Where, when you're looking at where they're... What count, what town are you counting as their birthplace? Sedalia, where the hospital is, or where the parents live?
It's always by the, the home address of the mother. And that's the way the state of Missouri breaks that down for me. I mean, in some districts, they allow me to get the actual household number, and I trace it right back to the mother. I only get by zip code here, aggregated, but that's the way we broke the data down. Okay, any other question? Okay.
One of the other things, in your graduation rates and ages, did you include, you know about what are your alternative school? Okay, all right, so you did factor that in.
We do not include that. We just carry the core schools. The ones I have on the screen here are the ones we do projections on. Alternative schools, magnet schools, charter schools, all those we don't usually typically include. We don't include any preschool, pre-K enrollment. That's all excluded too, because there's no correlation to projections and pre-K. Good question, though. Okay. Any other question? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate working with your district. Thank you again for your time.
I'm going to go ahead, even though he's not made his way back up. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on the consent agenda, this is items 4.1 to 4.6.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Okay.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. 4.7, payment of bills. Mr. Colfelt will abstain from this agenda item. Do I have a motion to accept 4.7?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Colfelt's abstaining. Payment of bills, Mr. Gardner will abstain from consent agenda item 4.8. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Payment of bills, Mr. Kimpton will abstain from consent agenda item 4.9. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And payment of bills with Ms. Schrader abstaining from consent agenda item 4.10. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is decisions, unfinished business. Dr. Frayley, the administrator evaluations?
Yes, the, I wanted you to see the attached document. It utilizes DESI's six standards and indicators for evaluation of building administrators. It serves as a growth model for performance ratings and evaluations. Wanted you to consider this for approval. Reflects DESI's current expectations and language for effective school leadership. The administrators had a hand in this development of a document that, basically, that they took on and adapted from another district or two. And we looked at different districts, looked at the state model, and this was what was created.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Frayley?
Move its approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Classroom trust fund transfer, Dr. Frayley?
Yes, and this is going to come back up later on in the agenda when I present long-range planning scenarios. I discussed this from before, that DESI will allow us to go back and amend our ASBR to 2017-18. Our maximum classroom trust transfer allowable is $1,508,058 for each of those years. This would be a total for four fiscal years to transfer from our general fund over into our capital projects fund. This would be a total of $6,32,232. This would then be able to be utilized for our long-term, long-range planning and construction projects that we're about to undertake. In addition to that, help offset the $6.46 million that we partially have spent and will continue to spend for the community center pool at the Hecker.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Frayley? Do I have a motion to approve the classroom trust fund revenue transfer?
I move that we amend our ASBR back to 2017 to 2018 and increase it $1,508,058 per year from 2017 through 2021 into the capital projects fund for a total of $6,32,232.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, Dr. Frayley, is the horseman roof replacement?
Yes, I brought this to the Board of Education previous month because of the dire need of improvement. Horseman, the original, original part of Horseman's roof, the tile part, that is over 100 years old. It's the waterproof membrane underneath. It's the tiles themselves are in great shape. They will last quite a while longer, actually. But the membranes underneath and some of the supporting structure, the chimneys that exist need secured before they, they begin to deteriorate more. We wouldn't want bricks falling from, from those, those structures falling down potentially on a playground or anything like that. They're still in fair shape. I don't want to panic anybody on the chimneys. But the roof, that's a different story. And we get hard rains. We have plenty of leaks in that building, some of which, them, pose potential hazards, even to the effect that there have been times where water actually find its way into the conduit, which poses an electrical hazard in that building. So, I would like to get moving and go ahead regardless of what our long-term plans are or end up being final approval for that building. That roof is long overdue. The district got over 100 years out of that roof, folks. And I dare say you won't build one today and get 100 out of it.
I'm sure of that. Yeah. Anyone have any questions for Dr. Frayley regarding this?
We, we can approve to do the whole roof or just the, the main portion of the original tile.
Scott, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I was going to ask if we, if there would be any insulation or anything put underneath where the peaked roof is that could possibly improve the heater, the heating and cooling of the, of the main structure.
I, I do not know the answer to that question without talking to contractors or the architects on that. I don't know of what benefit that would or would not be based on that building's structure.
Okay. I'm going to assume that the, one that we are going to be approving with the original clay tile would be the $882,000 project. It's the one...
The, the clay tile is the, the one that I would recommend because the difference is only about $80,000 versus metal. And as we discussed last time, we have the ability to, to use the existing tile and to even purchase more tile if necessary. There is also brought up by the architect, as a reminder, that the structure, or the structural integrity of that building could potentially be compromised by putting a lighter roof of compression against those walls.
Okay. The... I'm going to make a motion that we approve the $882,000 project that's listed as being from Hollis and, from the Hollis and Miller estimate, excuse me.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to decisions, Title I, assessment and evaluation. There she is. Hi.
Hi. In front of you, you guys have the Title I-A program evaluation for the 21-22 school year. As you see in front of you, this program has several goals. The first goal is for third and fourth grade students to perform above state average. And as you can see in that goal, we met nine out of the 10 areas. The second goal, I tweaked a little bit for this, for that year to follow the MSEP-6 model, which is a growth model. Because we do Ames Web in fall, winter, and spring, wanted to connect, again, that, that same model of, of growth. So, looking at that, kindergarten through fourth grade students will obtain a minimum of 20% growth, which we felt was obtainable in their early literacy reading Ames Web benchmark, which out of that, our five elementaries, we met four out of the five areas in those grades. Several strengths that we have in our Title I program is we implement a program called Phonics First. It is an Orton-Gillingham-based program that has been around for many, many years, since the 70s. This is a very, a multi-sensory, hands-on approach to learning phonics. We have implemented that in our title services as well as our Tier One instruction, kindergarten, first, and second grade. Our buildings meet weekly, monthly, to discuss data meetings, to discuss student growth, to look at students and, and figure out what interventions they, they may need. So, we're going to continue on with what we're doing because we feel like this has been successful. Any questions?
No? Okay.
I just want to, to praise, since Title is K-4, and our five elementaries, want to praise the administrators, our staff, and instructional coaches for all the hard work that they have done.
The Horseman fourth grade ELA did not meet proficiency. And the third grade did not meet the growth percentage. Any, any reasons why that you've been able to figure out?
Well, the state percentage, they're about five, a little under 5% under the state. You know, I think they continue to, to do what the rest of the buildings do, is to look at data, to evaluate their instruction. Is that familiar? Do you want to just kind of...
And still just barely under.
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're close.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Again, there's, there's good things going on in, in all buildings.
Any other questions for Ms. Gilmore?
I'll move we approve the report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ms. Nichols, can I?
Sure.
Make a mention on the MAP data that's on this. It's kind of a misnomer. This has been brought up to DESI by Mr. Pollitt. I've mentioned it as well, the way they do MAP scores in advanced and proficient. And you have basic and below basic. And I'm in agreement with Mr. Pollitt in that I feel that it does our state a disservice because just because a kid is in basic does not mean that, that they are necessarily behind. It means that they fall in an average range, in proficient and advanced are, are above average. So, I know that he's going to petition to, to go to three, you know, different categories instead of the fourth. I don't know how far that will go. But I, I think that that is, advanced and proficient, the, the rating or the percentage is, is misleading, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Sherman, Parents' Teachers Assessment and Evaluation.
Yes, in front of you is the Parents' Teachers Program Evaluation. And you can see the, the numbers from 21-22 of number of home visits and screenings that were done, as well as the ones that we've done currently this year. I did want to point out that the, that DESI has added $5.8 million statewide to the PTA, or PAT budget. And that gives Sedalia's 200th school district an additional $50,000 in allocations that, that we are looking at on how to best to get those allocations. So...
I'm noticing that, for instance, this, this calendar year, you've already made 428 visits in, in... in District 200, Sedalia, already. How many people, if we didn't, how many children would be, if we didn't have to worry about state funding or eligibility, how many people are in that group of kids that we, that Parents, Teachers could be provided for?
This, that 428, that is what, because we contracted with Early Head Start to do our home visits, we do the screening, so that 428 is what Early Head Start has done. The extra $50,000 that we have in allocations this year is what, is now what we can use to go out and provide home visits and screenings to some families that haven't had that ability in Sedalia because the money wasn't there previously.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Sherman?
Don't think so. Unless we approve this report?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Sherman. And you're up again.
Yes. In front of you is the Early Childhood Special Education and Title I Preschool Program Evaluation. You can see the number of students that, at the end of the year last year, we had 270 students, 198 of those with special needs. We served 92 title students and 20 integrated peer models. Currently this year, we are already serving 253 students, 147 of those are with special needs, 80 title students, and 26 integrated peer models. So as you can see, we are growing and you have graciously added needed teachers and staff to our program. And so, do you guys have any questions?
Quick question. So total number of students last year versus currently, do we increase students as we go on through the year?
Yes. Our ECSE program, as students qualify for special education on their third birthday, then we have to take them. And so throughout the year, every week, we get new students. So I'm anticipating by the end of this year, we'll hit 280, 290, possibly even 300 by the end of the year.
And then the PAT kind of feeds that as well, right? I mean, do?
Right, so those mass screenings, we help identify students with special needs.
Any other questions for Mr. Sherman? Can I have a motion to approve the Early Childhood Special Education and Title I Preschool Assessment?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Who seconded?
Scott.
I did.
Scott, okay, thank you. And the next, the last item under decision is the board candidate filing, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, this is a, the district is required to publish in a newspaper of general circulation in the district prior to the first day of filing. Law does not specify how much prior to the first day, which is December 6, 2022. The district will publish in a Sedalia Democrat on Wednesday, November 30, 2022, and Saturday, December 3, 2022, which is building required by law. Recommendation is to approve the legal notice for board filing candidates as presented.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under discussion, the Hollis and Miller updates, and we're exiting.
We'll exit the stage, yes.
Yep, okay.
All right. The district again started a process of long-range facilities planning about a year ago when, again, through RFQ process, Hollis and Miller Architects were hired as consultants for the district to analyze our facilities, to give us suggestions, recommendations, to grade our facilities, and give some recommendations based on various factors and help us survey the community and et cetera. So one of the things that we got out of that early information and the surveys, the public meeting, was number one, you go ahead and click, there's, click again, click again, that was to reconfigure grade levels and distribute students according per building, which would require renovations, to renovate and modernize existing buildings through a prioritized plan. And lastly, the last emphasis, of course, would be on district offices and the combination of those, because they're kind of spread out across the district as far as food service, maintenance, technology, and et cetera. So that was kind of the last priority. Go ahead, Mr. Curry. Like you saw a little bit ago, you're going to see some duplicate slides from the demographer and his presentation a little bit earlier. He had our current enrollment was 48-14. Now, this is K5, or sorry, K12, it does not include preschool. These are K12 numbers, estimated according to his data, 10 years from now, on the very high side of 49-10, in the middle 47-18, and on the low side of 45-25. This is our data. So as you can see, from 2015-16, and I shared this at the September 19 meeting also, that from a K4 perspective, you can see that we've been on a gradual decline of enrollment of little people. You'll also notice something that was in his report. There I am. That 63% of Sedalia 200 households only have one or two people living in them. So we either have a lot of young, single folks out there, or a lot of older folks out there, or a combination thereof. And the minority of our households have little children running through them, or do not have little children. Again, this is a slide you already saw. You know, he, based on capacity levels, additional 1,600 and some students. Go ahead, Mr. Curry. On the highest projected growth, you saw this slide also. The highest projected growth, we'd still be able to house about 109 more, based on, go back one. These are numbers that are based on K4 at those buildings, okay? Keep that in mind, so that does not have third grade or K3 if we remove fourth grade to the middle school. So you need to keep that at the forefront of your mind. Now, what I'm going to present is kind of a Plan A and a Plan B. I feel that we have to, at this point, have to kind of start somewhere. And we've gathered a lot of information, we've talked to a lot of people, we will continue to do so. I understand that not everybody will be on board with a lot of these suggestions. There's a lot of different ways you could reconfigure or move forward in this school district. So for one, we want to look at how we prioritize our facilities, how we best utilize those facilities, and look at our enrollment data, look at where it's pointing to, take community input, what the community wants and/or needs. That told us that they wanted us to continue to use our existing facilities and to renovate them. So that's kind of the starting point in this process. The other thing I need to do is always be conscientious of finance, of teacher retention and recruitment, and find ways in which we can trim budgets. Now, on the final numbers of this, there's an Excel document with our whole 10-year project plan based on what Hollis has identified. That does, this is a five-year synopsis, the way you're going to see now, okay? I need everybody to understand that. There's about, there's an additional $60 million, or total of about $60 million worth of potential renovations and projects in the whole list. Obviously, we can't afford all that right now. Go ahead, Mr. Curry. So we have some outliers to talk about. If we're predicted enrollment decrease of 8%, now, where I might disagree with Mr. Smith is it does not factor in potential community growth, nor does it potentially factor in changes to state statutes and, for example, like open enrollment law, which could affect us positively or negatively as far as enrollment goes. So we look at Horace Mann in Washington, because they're kind of our, you know, they're our 100-year-old buildings. They are of the smallest size, they would affect the least number of people. So one would still be needed. If we did something with one of those buildings, we'd still need one of them. Because we can't quite house that many students in the other three standing alone. One could be moved, repurposed, moving forward into central office and/or training rooms and et cetera. Washington has the least amount of students to be affected by a potential redistricting. And as of last year, the transient rate of Washington students was 45%. That means 45% of those students weren't there before. Their 10-year average is close to 40%. So almost half of the students that typically attend that school are not permanent home dwellers in that community or in that neighborhood. So again, it's about making decision based on what affects the least amount of folks. That was my thought process, my logic. You also don't know if future growth and progress may require down the road a new elementary school. And I know that would kind of seem like we're conflicting there a little bit, but I've been speaking about that for, you know, a couple of years now, that we need to be looking for potential land acquisition to set the district up for that potential, whether that's five years, whether that's 10 years, whether that's 15 years. I don't have the crystal ball, a lot can change. But I think we still need to have and plan for a growth mindset moving forward. Horace Mann could be repurposed, of course, we've had that discussion, district offices, board meeting room, onsite daycare potential, training rooms, et cetera. Go ahead, Mr. Curry. This is Plan A. April 2023, put the no-tax increase of the temporary operating levy that built this building here on the ballot to be extended. Right now, it's generating .86, .28 cents on the dollar as far as the tax rolls. It's about $3.5 million a year. According to the current assessed valuation, which you heard earlier, we have some issues with. So Mr. Gardner, a couple of years ago, brought up the idea of why don't we move kids around while construction takes place? As you can see, if we were, the first item, SMS improvements implemented summer of '23, that needs to happen. And when I say SMS improvements, we're talking about the secure entry on the front, guided secured entry on the front, but most particularly remodeling of the gym. That gym was built in 1972, and everything in it is 1972. If you've spent any time at a gym, you'll know that it's pretty dungy. Those bleachers are original, those bleachers need to come out like yesterday. In addition to that, we have the pool area. So repurposing the pool area into a multipurpose facility as well, in other words, it'd be a second gym. Because if you move more, if you move other classrooms or other grade levels into SMS, you're going to have to have more space for that. If you recall, when it was a pool, when there was even three grade levels in that building at one time, that they split PE between swimming and the gym. So then that would serve as a dual-purpose. Thank you. Indoor training facility. So it's PE recess in a day, and then it's available potentially with like a turf type of servicing for training of our programs after hours and indoor practices. So if this takes place, I'm recommending that we would move Horace Mann for one year over to SMS. Gives us another year to enforce the proof of residency, to see just exactly where our kids are in our buildings. We fully believe that there are families that are attending maybe a Skyline or Parkview that don't actually live in those districts. So we want to do an annual verification of address. During the timeframe that Horace Mann moves to SMS, and yes, that affects all Horace Mann students and staff for one year, we would bus them for that year, provide transportation, which may be an additional cost. But I've talked to the first student, I do not think it would be major. During which time, they can renovate Horace Mann School. That way, you have a whole year to go in without kids. I'm also told by Hollis and Miller that it potentially save us some cost in that we would have more competitive bidding potentially, because you have a bigger, longer-range project on your hands, rather than trying to go in over summer and piecemeal this and piecemeal that, or even having to extend that renovation over several years, instead of going in, knocking it out, getting it done, and moving the students back. So '24-'25, after Horace Mann had been renovated, they move back, fourth grade moves to SMS. So at that point in time, we would also redispers Washington School District, redistrict it into the other buildings at that time. Again, it has the least number of families affected. My suggestion at that time also would be, in '24-'25, Washington sits empty, we go in, we do the renovations it needs to bring it up to speed. And then the following year, we take our worst scoring structure, which is Whittier High School, and repurpose Washington Elementary into and make it Whittier High School, which could also serve as different things in the future. It could be a K12 alternative school, or a 612 alternative school. It could also be an alternative. It could also be an alternate high school with potentially a daycare center. So there's different options then, because we'd have some extra space. But keep in mind, and like the demographer showed, it's based 110 square feet for elementary, 160 square feet per kid for high school. So those big bodies will take up a lot more space than you think and will fill Whittier High School up a little quicker than you might imagine. And we can offer more opportunities for, to grow Whittier High School from its current numbers. Go ahead. So, my logic here is that by redistricting Washington Elementary, right now, we have 27 certified and 22 classified staff in that building. We have a natural turnover rate for elementary teaching positions of about 15 on average. As you can see, it would not take us more than a year or two, and our classified staff turnover at a much higher rate to absorb those individuals into other buildings. The estimated annual savings, salaries, and benefits from this would be approximately $2.5 million according to our current salary schedule. That's a 10-year savings of $25 million. Again, I, I added the transient rate again at Washington, which I had on the previous slide as well. More savings estimate, the Hollis and Miller has, has recommended $3.3 million. Of course, these, these estimates are on the high side. We understand that. To, to take over Whittier and to repurpose or to redo Whittier and bring it up to speed, renovate that whole place, you're talking about, about $3 million. Would not be spending that. We're not, the plan currently that they have to go into central office and make an addition, resurface, do all the things that it, the upgrades that it needs would come off the table, because the long-range plan potentially would be to move that over to 16th Street at Horseman, provided that someday we end up repurposing that school as well and building a new elementary on the north of northeast side of town. That would require an additional bond or levy on top of what we're currently posing. Because that, that elementary school right now, for about 500 kids, is going to, according to what I'm told, be about $30 million. And that's way more than what we can come up with at the moment. So that's, that's kind of a long-range aspect of that. And the central office building, I would never suggest working in there. I would never suggest putting $2 million, let alone $1 million, let alone probably $500,000 in that place. Or we would seek, seek an alternate facility for our main offices in that case. Go ahead, Mr. Curry. So the initial cost estimate for Pathway A is $26 million over the next five years. I wanted to throw, still want to mention, we have a need for baseball, softball, tennis, track and field improvements at Smith Cotton High School. Estimated at four to $5 million for that. That is part of the big picture of our community. There are a lot of naysayers about building this high school. I was here, I heard. They were loud. A lot of those naysayers to that levy, once this place was built, and they came out and they saw it, changed their mind. One of the best things we ever did for this community, and for this community to grow, was to build this high school. No doubt in my mind, and to build that stadium. And to have the projects that we have and the programs we have. They all cost money, we all know that. If we have, extend our athletic facilities in that regard, hopefully that will help us compete with neighboring communities. The demographer made mention that even though we have jobs, the jobs don't correlate necessarily with students in seats in this town. Part of that is, you know, we have new companies like Nucor come in, but are the families actually residing in today at 200? Are they choosing to, to live in Warrensburg? Are they choosing to live in Marshall? Are they choosing even to live in Booneville? Surrounding areas, even with schools that have, we have great facilities, but we have no baseball, softball, tennis at all. We rent those from the parks. And we are getting, no fault to the Parks Department, but they have other organizations, other schools, that they also have to offer those same opportunities. So our time and space is being limited more and more every year. That way, you have that all-in-one campus. Go ahead, Mr. Curry. Option B, again with the, the increased levy, again, do what we need to do to SMS, because SMS is a linchpin to all this. And we would keep, this scenario would keep all the, all of our elementary schools. We would still hear move Horseman to SMS for a year, and then move it back, and then the following year, move Washington to SMS, approve Washington, and then move the Washington kids back. So basically, and then at '25, '26, which is an extra year, then move fourth grade to SMS at that time. The pros is continue to have five elementary, neighborhooded schools. Your building staff transfers are unnecessary. Busing remains fairly constant, except for fourth grade. The cons, we have no salary and benefit savings for employee retention. That's eliminated. Cost of Whittier renovations would be required. No consolidation of district offices down the road. And we would have, with just K3 in all five buildings, we would have underutilized facilities based on current enrollment projections. Through this end, this is in the September 19th, and this is from LJ Hart, and just shows you, based on the levy, what they would forecast us to be able to, funding to raise. As you can see, .5 would put us at $29 million. As soon as the levy is passed, we can go ahead and, and go out and, and sell certificates into the future and pull those revenues in. .70 would be $36 million. Well, the estimate for the, the original five-year, this five-year plan that I have up is about 26. And we're going to pay six of that with the classroom trust transfers coming over. So what I'm getting at here is the less of this .86 levy, temporary operating, that we have to put towards these capital improvements, the more I can put in the pockets of our employees. Mr. Curry. Go ahead. This is kind of, whoa, whoa, too quick. So, levy vote in '23, April. Our enabling works, which means SMS renovations. As you can see, that first section is something we have to do. We need to get that done regardless of which direction we go. And then that would be to put improvements, guided entry sequences into our elementary schools. The roof, of course, which you just approved of Horseman. The guided entry sequences, again, is where somebody can come in. They get bu, they get into the building, out of the weather, and then they are in a secured area. Then they have to be buzzed into the office, but they cannot go directly into the school. So, on, once, a lot of our buildings right now are set up, you have to get buzzed in. But once you're buzzed in, you can walk right on down the hallway unless somebody stops you. This puts another layer of security into our buildings, which they would at least have to get, but, you know, get in the first time and then have to get out of the office to get into the main building. So that, that is what a guided entry sequence is. This is what we would do at Horseman, estimated $3.2 million. ADA improvements, restrooms, guided entry sequence, HVAC, interior doors, windows, tuck-pointing window treatments. I'd tell you, most of our buildings, to be honest with you, have not been remodeled in a long, long time, other than paint and some flooring. We're past due. Parking resurfaced at Smith Cotton High School that first year, because it's kind of splitting apart in a lot of places. And longer we let that go, the worse that's going to get, and the more costly it will be to repair. Should the levy vote pass, then that summer of 2024, we can generate, start generating funds based on that levy extension, and we can start at the junior high. We know the junior high needs significant attention. A lot of masonry work, needs a new roof, needs windows, interior doors, and etc. And then a connection connecting, we had talked about connecting all the buildings so kids don't go outside between classes, which is a huge safety aspect that we're trying to protect. Parkview and Skyline, get new roofs. Well, they're the new schools. Well, they were 1991, I believe. And by my farmer math, that's 30 years old and a little bit. Most of you, if you own a home, have replaced your roof in the last 30 years, at least reshingled it. Go ahead. And as we talked about earlier, in 2024, '25, Washington renovated. Same type of improvements as Horseman. And then go ahead, Mr. Curry. And then we could move, potentially move Whittier over to Washington. Pathway B, if we fail in April, we run it again the following year, and the timeline gets pushed back. You can only do what you only have so much money to do. All right. So if we want to go back to the stage and have discussion, that'd probably be most appropriate, I would guess.
Okay, next will be the professional development, six through 12, math and science. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I guess I got a question. So if we do stay with the elementaries in such Washington, Horseman, did they project what it'd cost to install tornado or better shelter, shelters in those two schools?
That was not included, to my knowledge of, no, it was not included.
Because that's, that's a big concern there. And then if we do change Washington over to Whittier, we'd need to look at something there. We won't, wouldn't have as many students there, but you'd have the same potential. In case, unless you did a alternate school, K, K through 12, then you might have as many students.
The, one of, one of the potential renovations to Washington, my own. Is the, one is an elevator shaft on it to be put, put on for ADA compliance, because it has no elevator right now. Another thing that was discussed was to extend or expand the gymnasium and then potentially look at that as a potential shelter area.
Do it like the Loffis Gymnasium.
Yeah.
Which is a shelter.
Also, if, if you were doing that at Whittier, side by side by the elevator, if it's the typical, you know, two stories, maybe go down to the basement and use hydraulics, you could actually put a second shaft next to it, and that would be the staircase down to the basement.
There is no basement.
There's, there's a basement there at Whittier, but, but it's tricky.
Yes, it's tricky to get to right now. Crawl space, I would call it.
Yeah. The other thing is that, would there be some flexibility in there while we look around for a place to consolidate the separate facilities? I know that we had looked at one spot in particular, but there are a couple of other locations that we could use to consolidate all, all, all of the central office or district facilities.
I know we've had different discussions about that. And I know that the, back to, even to the last year, people had contacted Mr. Triplett concerning potential purchases of different buildings in town. Central office is not an area that I wanted to prioritize necessarily. But absolutely, I think the board should be open to options and never let a, a good deal go by unnoticed.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Fraley, the, which, which of the two options did the, did basically the administrative staff, where are they leaning at? What, where, and which one do you want to do?
Oh, maybe you should ask them.
Well, I figured that maybe there was already a conversation.
It's kind of a mixed bag, to be honest with you. There's some that would like to be more aggressive and potentially shut, you know, go ahead and close Washington and Horseman and go build a new, a new building. And not put investment into those, those buildings to go build a new building and to add on to our three existing. There's ideas about making things K5. There's been ideas thrown around about shutting down the middle school and/or repurposing SMS or selling SMS. There's just been a ton of ideas thrown around. And I, I thought at this point in time, we, it's time we kind of start narrowing our focus. And one of the ways I decided to do that is because the, the survey data, even though it was, you know, wasn't a huge sample of participation, but they had discussed the need that we wanted to renovate what we already had. And that's, that's why I focused more in that direction. Again, I, I do feel that the district at some point in time will need a new facility. Ideally, to close down and/or repurpose both of those facilities, we would, we would need to add on to the other buildings and building new building.
Yeah, it is interesting, because I remember in your presentation, you said you're kind of talking out both sides here when it comes to, and I, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around the fact if our enrollment's going down and we're going, I understand, we don't know what's going to happen in 20, 30, 40 years, but according to this demographer, we're kind of, I mean, we're, we're on a gradual decline and kind of staying steady. Unless something drastically changes, that idea of a, a new building may just be, may, may not even be... may not be worth it if our current buildings, if we're renovating our current buildings and making them up to date. Isn't that, that's really the, that's the, that, that is the, the question. Do we do that or do we buy a new building, right?
And it, you know, the costs, the cost of, of building a new facility and adding on to the three existing structures would be very significant. And then we have the, the issue of the junior high school of putting several million, if not, you know, 10 to 15 million dollars into that facility to, to make it right again. So it adds up, it adds up fast. I know that Hollis and Miller have overestimated in, in most areas, of course. And we would hope that those bid packages would come in far less than, than what's been projected. I have to lean on, lean on their data, what they've given me, and lean on the demographer to, to a certain extent. But our own enrollment data, K4, is showing us that we're in decline.
I'm having difficulty closing down or repurposing Washington and also repurposing Horace Mann. In Horace Mann, you have a building that is smack in the middle of the mostly, most densely populated area where there are students. I mean, it's right in the real, middle of that, that red zone that was in the demographic materials. Washington is another neighborhood school, but because of the transient nature of a lot of people in there, and quite frankly, the housing stock that, that is in that area, I can see why. And you have a better case of, of, of repurposing Washington Elementary and turning it into, into the Whittier of tomorrow. I don't see you putting a new school north of the tracks until you have fire protection north of the tracks. The city has said that they will be putting a new firehouse in the Hubbard Park area. Don't do anything north of the, of the Missouri, of the Union Pacific tracks until that fire protection is in place. Simply because that way, you know, that way you've got better fire and EMS protection, but don't do it until the city puts those facilities in, unless you plan to put those facilities on district land and have them built at the same time.
Well, I think that projection was, you know, a few to several years down the road, if, if at all, depending on our, our need and our numbers, like Mr. Herron just alluded to.
Could, the one, one suggestion you mentioned, I, I really wanted to hear the, the input of the, of the principals and so forth. Then you say, well, let's talk to them. Could, could you facilitate that specifically with that being the agenda item and even possibly the, oh, the superintendent advisory committee and really go there on that one?
My, my idea to suggest today is for us, one, we don't have to get, I think sometimes we feel, including myself, that, you know, we started this process a year ago and, you know, it's like, you know, get with it, let's go. You know, we need to, we need to have, have a decision made. I don't know that a month or two or three necessarily is going to sink our ship, but we do need to have a starting point for discussion. And that's, that is the plan that I, I brought up today. I fully anticipated that we need to have another community meeting, potentially this coming month or in January, and to get, solicit more input and feedback.
And I know that the school board election, you have a, you start taking names December 6, and the cutoff date is December 27. What is the cutoff date to put the levy?
January 23rd.
Thank you. All right.
I think, I think having a community meeting, I like that idea to, we've got another.
Yeah, we need the input, for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Fraley, I know Hollis and Miller, and this is basically about how best to repurpose and use our buildings. Both of your plans indicated that the fourth grade would move to the middle school.
Correct.
Is that the direction we've definitely decided on or is that an area that's still open to discussion?
I think that's the direction we've been leaning for many, many years. We have, you know, you look at SMS and you can say, well, you could go K5. You have a building there that could house eight, 900 kids. You would not want a K5, you know, with more than five, 600 max and more generally speaking, under 500 for, for K5. So you'd be very much under-utilizing that, that facility unless you use part of that facility for something else. You know, one of the things that brought up with the shutting down of the pool was to, you know, potentially add a bunch of more classrooms in that area. Well, the architects are stating that we'd probably at most get three or four good classrooms out of that space. The potential to go double, double decker in there, you can do it potentially. They're not recommending it. You have certain, you know, ceiling space and the height and then the stairwell, how the stair, stairs would have to be designed. You know, you walk in there and you think, wow, this, you know, this, that's a big building, but it's really only, you know, about 100 and some by, you know, 50 or 60. So it's, it's not as huge as what you may think as far as adding classroom space. You know, a classroom, even a 25, a 25 classroom, which isn't huge, that takes up, you know, that's 100 feet real quick. So, you know, the anticipation that we would use, be able to utilize that space to really expand what we could put in that building based on that is structurally not advisable. So.
Well, I remember that our, at our community meeting in September, one of the secondary proposals that was pretty popular was the concept that we move the sixth grade down rather than move the fourth grade up. And while that may not be as effective a use of our space, it, I mean, basically what we're looking at is what's best for the student's education. And I think most of the recent research has shown that a 6-5 pairing in terms of education and learning and developing skills is more, is a better placement there.
I, I heard in my superintendent's advisory committee, I, I heard argument to the opposite of that as well. I know it's September 19th, that was discussed. In my advisory committee, there were, there were a significant, you know, faction on the other side of that argument from, from those teachers and instructors. Right or wrong, the, the middle school does offer the opportunity, because we own such a large piece of property, to, you know, forecast into the future, you could potentially obviously add on or build in a, a new segment that you could attach to that property. The elevation, of course, of that land, that vacant land to the north would have to be contended with, certainly. I'm not a civil engineer, so I'm not going to speak to what that would entail. But in the future, there is definitely room for expansion of grade levels at that facility. Whether that be fourth, whether that be sixth. So all those options have been discussed. Like I said, there are a ton, a ton of different options that you can take in this process of how you work or rework what we have. What we did to bring, you know, to go backwards is we built a new early childhood center. And then we moved the early childhood center out of the middle school and basically freed up space for about 450 kids. And how we utilize that space will obviously, like I said, that building's the linchpin as to how all the other dominos fall.
And Dr. Fraley, I think one of the things that we underestimated at the beginning was the benefit that utilizing SMS as a potential swing school is what Hollis and Miller would call it. They see this a lot in the Kansas City area when they have old school buildings that they close down and they build new ones. When they go to remodel another building, they move that building over to the building that has been closed down, remodel this building, and then move them back. You know, that's an opportunity that we heard a lot of benefits from utilizing that. Mr. Gardner had said that a couple of years ago. But the, the window that it opens up with the bid process, as well as just the ability to complete those things without it impacting the education of students because they're not in that building while the remodel is trying to be accomplished.
Kansas City school districts are not the only ones that do it. Springfield did that. We have, Diane and I have a classmate who was there at a middle school that, or excuse me, an elementary school that was completely wiped off the map. The students were put at another nearby elementary or middle school while the new Delaware Elementary was being constructed. And it's the same thing, you're able to put them somewhere and then rebuild it. Actually, Joplin started that when they put their entire high school into a, after the tornado, into a big box store.
If, if we intend to keep Horace Mann and Washington in any capacity, they're going to need significant repairs. And if we intend to do that, then I think we would be really missing the point of if we did not try to move those two buildings over to SMS and take advantage of this opportunity that was just discussed.
I, I appreciate seeing this in at least a baseline plan that we can work off of with more input. And I hesitate sometimes to pick out specific examples because I feel like I'm discounting that there are issues at all the buildings that need to be addressed. But, you know, it was probably seven months ago when there was an issue at Smith Cotton Junior High and this board came together and we were all pretty ready to pick out the fence ourselves. We had a discussion on it and we tabled it to see what Hollis and Miller would say about it. But are we comfortable with, obviously that safety issue is still there, waiting two years. I know it's a big ticket item. I know we can't go and do the guided entries. I respect the fact that we want to do total renovations to save money with bids, competitive bidding. But with safety and our, and our students at heart here, are we comfortable waiting two years to do that renovation enclosure by means of fence or walls and doors? That's the only question I saw from, from this that I thought about.
I, I think at a, a minimum, at minimal cost, we could have a fence erected that, that follows the Katy Trail from the northeast corner of the wrestling room down, you know, to, along the Katy Trail, down to Ninth. So, or Tenth, sorry. I think at a minimum, that, that, that would dissuade those folks traveling, walking and crossing through our, our parking lot. Doesn't do anything for the other side. But I hear what you're saying. If the board should want to go ahead and, and go out for bid for fencing, we can certainly go ahead and do that. Relatively speaking, that would be a minimal cost compared to what's going to happen should we extend a levy and enclose that campus. It just, some of it may need to get, will be, obviously would be removed after the fact.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
I, I just would echo the fact that I, I appreciate that we're moving forward with this and that you're taking, I mean, you're, you're taking a, a great lead here. And, you know, I think this is something that probably should have been done a long time ago. And I appreciate you taking the initiative, so thanks.
Well, thank you. I, I know there's, there's little Todd Fraley Cubey dolls with, you know, big pins stuck in them. Because whatever you recommend, whatever recommendation ends up coming out, there'll be people that are upset and unhappy. Either, either way we go.
So for the community meeting, that, of course, with the holidays, it's hard to throw anything else into December. Would you think early January?
That's, that was in my mind.
Okay, so that'll be forthcoming. We'll talk more about that as, yeah. Okay, now, professional development, six through 12, math and science. Ms. Brownfield?
Yes, we are very excited about this innovative approach, is what we're calling it, to, kind of came up as a textbook adoption as our cycle year for math. And there's been a lot of conversations about, you know, textbooks no longer really being textbooks, it's programs. There's a lot of research-based, open source-free programs that are available. And this opportunity came to us by way of not focusing on a program, but focusing on best instructional practices for our math and science teachers both to experience their content as the student and the teacher, integrating current resources and materials that we're already using in our curriculum along with exposure to open source materials and, and other resources that are available. So we are just looking at taking the funds that we currently had allocated and re-appropriating them for professional development model in experiencing the best practices moving forward for this next textbook cycle.
Any questions for Ms. Brownfield? This will come back next month for decision? No questions? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pyle, the Missouri Energy Audit Reimbursement Program?
Yes, this will go along with many things that Dr. Fraley's discussed tonight and our board with the future plans for our district. This would be another opportunity for us. So the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, DNR, is offering an opportunity for public school agencies to take part in the Missouri Energy Audit Reimbursement Program. This program assists by providing funds for professional energy audits for our facilities. To apply for this grant, DNR requests that our district, along with an energy savings company, complete an application for the program. Tonight, I'm asking for approval to submit this request for proposals to approve DNR energy savings companies to begin the application process. The energy savings companies retain it only if we are awarded the grant. Recipients are reimbursed for all eligible expenses incurred up to a maximum of 20,000. And upon, upon a completion of this energy audit, the district should consider applying for the DNR energy loan program. And this was something that the district utilized before to help us get our ground source systems. And it would go along with what we're currently doing at this time to help us in the future with future funding options. So if the board would consider this, I could bring this back in December to go on and pursue this.
Does that give you, do you have a deadline or?
The application runs through June. And I've talked to DNR and they tell me we're still in very good shape to apply, but.
Okay. So any questions for Mr. Pyle?
You're, you're actually wanting to wait until the next meeting, though, to, to have the RFP submitted?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That would give, in case there was any questions tonight, and make sure that decision would come to the next month. But yes, I'll bring it back in December.
Okay. Thank you. Cross-country and wrestling programs at Smith Cotton Junior High. Mr. Norton?
Good evening. I am stepping in for Mr. Davis tonight, who is under the weather. We are bringing to you tonight a proposal to introduce two athletic programs to the junior high. I do believe you have the memo from Mr. Davis along with statements from Coach Holsey, who is our head boys and girls wrestling coach, and Mr. Holloway, who is our head cross-country coach for Smith Cotton. Do you have any questions on the proposal? This would be to add the junior high version of the programs to help with recruitment at the high school and to get more kids involved at an earlier level. to help with recruitment at the high school and to get more kids involved at an earlier level.
Any questions for Mr. Norton or either coach?
No, I'm all for it. I just want to know where the new course is going to be around the high school.
Mr. Holloway is working on that course.
Anything else? No?
Numbers on how many kids are interested in the programs?
I don't think we've taken it past the point of bringing it to you to look for numbers. But if you look at junior high cross-country programs, you can see them all over the place. And junior high kids are looking for anything to get involved in. I think you'll see two full programs once these are implemented.
Would you also be using it to provide some stamina training for other athletic areas?
I think both these junior high, both of these programs lend to helping out with other track and field, football. There's all kinds of things they can learn and get from these two programs.
Not to put any of you all on the spot, because, Mr. Norton, this isn't yours, but I do recall when Mr. Davis brought this last year, he indicated that fielding a schedule for these programs would not be an issue. Is that the way you guys see it as well? I think we've got a lot of surrounding and even our conference now, school districts that would be easy for us to populate schedules for these starting next school year.
I'll just point out, I know at the high school wrestling program, you did a phenomenal job growing it. My son was in there, loved it. And they had, I mean, they're overly packed. They, I mean, both girls and boys team. So, I think you'll have no problem if you did the same thing at the junior high that you did at the high school. Keep up the good work.
I'd just add that, you know, there's a lot of talk about how we become more competitive in our athletics and our activities. And we all know that that starts at the youth level. So, and we're really behind the eight ball when the programs that we compete against have these programs and resources of development and we don't.
Anything else for Mr. Norton?
Thank you.
Thank you. And the Sedalia 200 Tiger Paraprofessional to Teacher Scholarship, Mr. Curry?
Yes, just to begin the discussion about this possibility with the Board of Education this evening. If we haven't heard it five times or more this evening, the term teacher retention and recruitment continues to be an area of concern for us. This concept or program would mirror very closely our Tiger Legacy Scholarship that we offer for alumni of our district. Students that graduate as seniors can apply for that scholarship opportunity. This would be seen in a very similar light as to that. If we have current paraprofessionals who are working on their education certification, this would be, again, a scholarship opportunity that they could apply for. There would be a committee similar to the Tiger Legacy Committee, evaluate the applications, and then make selections based as we saw fit. Typically, what we would see is a paraprofessional would look for the special education pathway just because that's the environment that they typically work in, but that's not always the case. So, as we all know, special education teachers are, you know, right there with math and science teachers. They're some of the hardest areas to fill. Last year, we had conversation regarding this topic and we expanded our Tiger Legacy scholarships to include all areas because all areas are currently a high need. This, in my opinion, is another opportunity for us to take the people that are currently employed with us that are in our district, if they're willing to abide by the, there is a rough draft of the agreement in here for you all to review. But if they were willing to agree to accept our scholarship to come back and work for us for a set number of years, again, very much the same agreement that we use for Tiger Legacy, I see this as a great opportunity to increase our base of pool applicants. These people are willing to work with us again and go on working full-time and take part in the teacher education program. I think this is a great benefit for them as well as for us if we could secure a future employee for two, three, four more years. So, it's just, again, for discussion. More so what I think we would look to bring back for the board to decide and kind of Dr. Fraley's guidance and input as to a figure, a financial monetary amount of dollars that we would like to contribute to this or have available. I'm not saying that we would utilize this every year, but what would be a number that he would like to see us be able to budget for that we could sustain this? And again, it pays for itself when those employees come back and work for us as certified teachers. So, just something for us to think about. And I'm happy to have any conversation or field any questions as I can.
Any questions for Mr. Curry?
I just, I do have one. What is the longest bus route that we have?
What?
I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. I'm sorry, you're right. I apologize. I was looking at the next item.
I probably wouldn't be able to answer that top of my head for you either, but it is pretty long.
My bad.
It's okay.
No questions for Mr. Curry?
I'll just add that there's a lot of, significant amount of push for these type of programs and school districts thinking in the same direction as well as offering scholarships and/or bringing in home, or creating a graduate-level degree cohort program within the school system that as a retention piece for teachers as to districts that coordinate and collaborate with a accepting university and they develop a program, cohorts with inside the school system. And the school district pays for those applicants that are accepted to those master's specialist programs as another, not necessarily recruitment, but a retention idea, so just throwing that out.
That's a great idea.
Now that I'm back on the subject, should we consider something further down the road? If this works, that we use a similar approach to have a group of substitute teachers that are available for us?
As far as the substitutes being a part of that potential?
Yes.
If they're working towards their education certification?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I guess there'd be a potential for that, certainly.
Okay. I'll apologize about getting off the subject.
Any other questions about the scholarship opportunity? And now, for information, the bus routes, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, I'll share information with our public and our board tonight. The routes are very similar to previous years. Thirty-one total buses running on a daily basis throughout our district with five buses in our reserve fleet. Approximately 3,500 to 3,600 students are eligible to take advantage of the routes and bus transportation on a daily basis. Ridership has increased this year. Our bus fleet covers 1,710 miles, approximately 213 gallons of fuel daily. So, a breakdown was listed in your packet with the 31 buses utilized, 24 buses on regular routes for elementary, middle, junior high and high school, three special needs bus routes, four early childhood bus routes, one CTC with our State Fair Community College partnership, and one Reach Bus who travels throughout our district. So, with that information, I want to just say thank you to Connie and first student, Mr. Triplets there as well, supporting and working with a partnership with her, visited with them on this, and they just wanted to say thank you very much to their drivers. We are 100% staffed at this time. Connie shared with me that there's so many districts surrounding that are still trying to hire, as we know. And this year, we're in good shape at this time. So, it's a compliment to, I believe, our leadership and to those hard-working employees that are getting our kids on a daily basis.
What type of fuel do they all use and what's the longest route?
The diesel, we have diesel options on our buses as the fuel option. I do not know the longest actual individual route, but I'll find that out and let you know. I know that sometimes an hour is some of the longest ride times, but that was with many stops with the M, but I'm not sure the actual mileage per bus. Seventeen hundred and ten overall.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Pyle? Thank you.
Thank you.
ACT data, Smith Cotton High School, Ms. Brownfield?
You have before you the ACT data from the graduating class of 2022. You'll notice that as far as our average ACT scores in our composite, we are one point from the state average. So, maintaining kind of just right there, neck and neck with the state on the scores themselves. With the percent of students being college-ready, we did see a decline there along with the state average went down as well in most of the categories. Just a reminder that that college-ready basically is a benchmark that is set by ACT. So, it's a percentage of students that reach. That benchmark meaning it's a predictive score that when these students are in college and these classes and these content areas, that they will score a B or better. So, that's kind of what that initial chart is. A couple of things to note is that we did see an increase in students from our class of 2021. 188 students completed the ACT versus 230 in this last graduating class. We've also had students continue to complete the ACT Workkeys Assessment. So, those are students that are wanting to do a little bit more on the workforce-ready assessments. Whittier pilots the majority of that program very successfully. Also noteworthy, just wanted to mention that when looking at the colleges and universities, most of your universities that are offering a four-year bachelor's degree program, about 80% of them across the nation are no longer requiring an ACT score. Not necessarily meaning that they don't encourage it, but the requirement is lifted. So, what they're seeing or what students are seeing now or being approached with is a test optional situation where the score would be reviewed if available, but it wouldn't necessarily hinder them. And then a test-blind situation as well. So, even if they had the scores, they would not be reviewed in their application process. It would be based on GPA only. So, many of the universities are continuing to switch, which changes how we are looking at and what we need to do moving forward with ACT and the best possible outcomes for our students. Mr. Norton and his team has worked very hard on, you know, vision of a graduate. And as things continue to evolve, this is one of those pieces that we consider and look at to figure out what it needs to look like moving forward.
I'm just looking at the data here and what happened in 2022?
It's a great question. As far as the college and readiness and seeing that decline, we did notice that. I can tell you that, you know, that's kind of the year where we no longer tested all of our juniors. And so, we lost all of those students. You know, for a long time, we were testing the entire junior class. And so, things shifted. Along with that, the pieces that we had in the seminar classes where we were regularly reviewing ACT practice questions during seminar, students didn't have exposure to that moving forward. As some of that changed and some of the COVID things changed that as well, having to make some of those changes and shifts. So, as far as pinpointing a direct answer to that, it's kind of, don't really have a direct answer for that graduating class.
Ms. Brownfield?
Yes, sir.
Something that I recall in this data set that's not included in this particular presentation is the number of our students who were enrolled in core classes.
The core or more?
Was significantly below the state average. Can you explain, elaborate that?
I do not have that data in front of me on this report. They did not include that with the graduating profile report, but I can get that.
But, I mean, what does it mean, the core, having the core classes?
So, that just means the students that are meeting the core, the ACT's standard for the core enrollment or exceeding that. So, those students that meet those core classes, not necessarily based on the state, what the state sets, but what ACT is considering those core classes within that particular content area.
And it's my understanding that our students, we have fewer students enrolled in that, in those than the state, correct?
In the core or more?
Yeah.
Yes, as the 2021 data, yes. I do not have that with the 2022 piece, which is why I put this report. They are no longer honestly providing, even ACT's not even providing the full reports that they used to. I think that's kind of part of this whole shift with the universities changing as well. So, some of the data that we used to get is also dwindling.
I have not received the ACT report for three years. It used to come to the building level and then was passed on to Ms. Brownfield. I will tell you, I'm surprised and not for sure I believe that 230 individual students took the ACT their senior year from the class of 2022. That number seems very high. High to me. And also, we don't report any of our data to ACT as in what classes the student takes. So, if ACT's getting any data, they're getting it from the individual student.
Correct. It's how the student fills out their profile.
Students consider core. If they're in a definition of it, we don't even know the definition. So, I don't know how our students would understand that definition for a class.
There's a demographic profile report that each student fills out prior to taking the actual ACT. And that's what Mr. Norton's referring to, where they go through and fill out. And it has the list of courses that they've taken and not taken.
When we took it, when we had the junior level to take the ACT as a grade level, then the teachers went through that demographic sheet that they filled out before they took the ACT. So, there was more information in the students' questions. Now, they just fill it out before they start taking tests.
Right. That's not guided as it was before.
Have these, I'm seeing your figure about 80% of colleges and universities no longer requiring ACT or SAT. Are they moving on to some other testing or what are they doing?
It's primarily GPA is what a lot of them are doing. It's ACT, SAT, or GPA in many cases. So, if the ACT doesn't necessarily fit, then they're looking at the GPA as a model for the student.
Anything else for Mrs. Brownfield? Thank you.
Thank you.
Building quarterly reports, Dr. Fraley?
Yes, in front of you or in the packet are the quarterly reports that we do each year showing various different aspects of building performance. I want to make mention, something that stands out, it stands out every year, seems to be, I'd have to go back previous years, but our kindergarten readiness, the average is 16% come basically quote-unquote "on a level." The amount of growth that our teachers and our administrators at the building level that will happen over the year is just flat-out amazing. But I think folks need to understand that they're not necessarily coming to us completely maybe where one might think they should be ready for kindergarten.
Does anyone have any questions on the quarterly building report? Next is the 90-90 attendance, Dr. Fraley?
Yes, you have the 90-90 attendance report. I want to make mention again, you see the district-wide was 85, ended up being 85.03. That means that 85.03% of our students have 90% attendance or higher. That is different, it's a different calculation than the next report in the packet, which is our ADA. I don't, this report, the 90-90 report, is how the state basically is a check mark on our- I don't, this, this report, the 90-90 report is how the state basically is a check mark on our grade card. They, they judge the 90-90 as far as, you know, district accreditation and et cetera, which I don't know why they do that, but they pay you off of the ADA report, which is the next item. So you, you can have just a few of your students, small portion of your students that have really, you know, bad attendance can, can make an effect across the board from a percentage standpoint. Would you like to move on to the next one?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So if you look at the ADA report, which is the funding calculation for schools from the state, overall as a district, we're at 93.69%. Certainly we'd like, love to keep that up there in that regard, maybe push that up to 95 would be wonderful. I do know that we have a COVID flu season already underway, so I'm actually tickled that that's as, as strong as it is right now. And hopefully we can keep that train rolling into the next few months.
We keep reading about RSV and things like that. Is that, is that, is that a problem in the, in the district?
Uh, Mr. Curry, maybe I will speak more to that, but it mainly affects kids under five, I am told, more, more so.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly see it. I think you could probably see in some of our subrates as well with staff members having their own sick kids. So we'll, we're seeing that impact. We're seeing some flu already across the buildings, some stomach bugs. You know, like, like Dr. Fraley said, our praise to our, our buildings for the attention that they're giving this, because this is a big year for us on attendance and they're already tracking students and they're tracking their number of absences. And they, they, they'll know how many days are remaining that they have for those kids to be at school, to get their attendance above the 90% mark as we continue throughout the school year. And they're monitoring it very closely and they're making a lot of contacts and they're, they're beating on doors and making phone calls. So they'll, they'll continue to deal with it and we thank them for all the work they do.
Any questions regarding either of these attendance, the 90-90 or the ADA? The Missouri School Boards Association, a couple of our board members, three of us, I believe, recently attended the Missouri School Boards Association 2022 Annual Conference. Dr. Fraley also attended, Mr. Gardner and Ms. Schrader and I. You all, quick, real, just any highlight or if not, that's fine?
I spent two sessions, three sessions going to CSEP presentations because we're, we're going to need to realign our CSEP with MSIP six standards. I attended a workshop on gifted programs throughout the state. I attended a workshop on students' right to free speech and what is allowable within a school setting. So yeah, just generally a lot of good sessions and a lot of good meetings.
Mr. Gardner, did?
Oh boy, I'll try to make it fast. There were excellent sessions about cybersecurity. I've passed on everything, including posters to Madeline. And then there were other, there were other seminars that I went to on, on MSIP six, also the MSBA Equity Toolkit and Equity Training, including some information from Lee Summit, which I didn't realize that they would have something like that. But let me just go back through my notes. Missouri Ethics Commission had a good, an excellent seminar on conflicts of interest. Real simple, rule number one, if in doubt, consult with the district's attorneys and the Missouri Ethics Commission. Rule number two, if in doubt, don't do it. Bidding and picking the lowest bid cures a lot of problems, but we've had some problems with that around here. An excellent presentation from the, from the, I think, yeah, this was Neo Show on the Backstage Pass. The Sedalia Police Department, for instance, puts on or used to put on a citizens academy. This is, would be similar. And you don't even have to be a candidate for school board or anything, but it was a way to educate people about the district. It would be typically, typically about six separate nights over as many weeks. Some tours, a lot of information that people may not be familiar with, including the, including sunshine law, structure of education, finance and some tours of district facilities that people may not have. And if we can do something like that, okay, this is tricky because I'm going to be running. But this needs to be done for, for the good of the district. We've had a lot of, we've had a lot of people screaming at us. We need to show this district in a better light and we need to educate some people. The other thing that I went to was the, two days before that, the Midwest School Safety Summit. I've passed on a lot of the things that, that I've gotten from there to people in the district. The important thing to remember when you're talking about safety, the whole back of the room, the sides of the room had lots of nice shiny stuff. And of course I've, I've joked that I'll buy anything shiny made by Apple. But they had all kinds of shiny stuff. You don't do that. You work on changing kids' perception of law enforcement for a positive. You've pointed this out, I think, when you've talked about when you were a principal. If kids are hungry, don't feel loved, don't have shoes, they won't connect to the community and know that the community cares. Bullying because a child does not have resources is a major problem and we need to look into setting up a bright futures program for here. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Couple of the sessions I attended, one talked about an onboarding session for newly elected board members, a more formal type, where they would meet with central office staff and kind of be onboarding like a lot of businesses and organizations do. So it was a great MSBA conference and I appreciate all that we're able to go. Next item is a donation. Ms. Jackson? Is she the one to run this?
Yes, we just had some items related to a $500 donation, the health program for lunch balances. I thought it would be very, I'm considering this is our first year, happy full lunch again, so it was a little bit exciting.
Very much so. Thank you. And I will now hear a motion to adjourn to close executive session.
Make a motion to close the meeting authorized by Section 610-021, RSMO subsection one, legal actions, three, hiring and firing, disciplining or promoting, six scholastic, scholastic discipline of graduation, 13 personal records, personnel records, 14 records which were protected by law of the Missouri statutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And Barbara, roll call?
Kenny Kofelt?
Aye.
Scott Gardner?
Aye.
Matthew Heron?
Aye.
Sam Kimpton?
Aye.
Michael Stees?
Aye.
Diana Nichols?
Aye.
Barbara Schrader votes aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.